Welcome to this evening's work session. The date is Tuesday, February 25th, 2025. First, we're going to hear about procedures for amending the Cortez City Charter presented by the city attorney, Patrick Coleman.
questions, so that, because... So basically, and you have to time the approval of the ordinance, because there are limits. So within 30 days after the adoption of the ordinance, the city has to publish a notice of the election. And then not less than 60 days, nor more than 120 days, the election has to be held. So you want to time your holding of the public hearing on the ordinance so that it won't become effective less than 60 days, nor more than 120 days. The city can have elections on November 4th of 2025, that's the general election. You could do a special election as early as January 7th, 2026. And the rule is that you can't hold a special election within three months prior to the general municipal election. And in Cortez, that will be April 7th, 2026. So you could hold an election in November of this year. You could hold election January 7th of 2026, or hold it April 7th of 2026, which is the regular general election date for the city. Or any time after that, in 2026, you could do a special election. Obviously, and I think the clerk will go into some of the specifics on the costs of doing elections. And in our instance, the county clerk and recorder helps conduct the election, but they're not legally obligated to. And we sign a new agreement with the county each year. So they could choose not to do it at any time in any particular year. So the cost certainly would be even greater if the city had to conduct the election entirely on its own. I won't go into a lot of the details. You can read them in the memo. But there, you know, it goes into some detail about the constitutional rules, the procedure to amend or repeal a charter. And I will note that another method of amending the charter is by petition from the public. So if council decides they don't want to mess with amending the charter, the public could actually do a petition that complies with these rules in the statute and seek to have you do an election to amend the charter, even if you decided on your own not to. I would expect that, based on the conversations I've heard, that council is very much in favor of doing some amendments. So I won't go into details about the petition process, but if you have more questions, I certainly can answer those. The city charter just says, "This charter may be amended at any time in the manner provided in Article 20 of the Constitution of the State of Colorado." And as I see it, there are basically three procedures for determining the proposed amendments. One would be a council-led review during council work sessions. So you could undertake the review in multiple work sessions and arrive at the proposed text of the amendments through that method. The second method would be the council appointing a charter review committee, much in the way that the council did for the update to the land use code. It would certainly be discretionary on your part as to who might be on that committee. I would certainly recommend that you get some members of the public, perhaps some members of staff, and one or two council members to serve on that committee as well. The third method, which generally is, in my experience, only used if you're going from a statutory town to a home rule town or city, where you're adopting a charter from scratch. And that's to hire a consultant that could do all of the work, or in conjunction with a committee or with staff, present you with a proposed amendment. I guess my recommendation would be option B, that you form a committee. And much like the land use code, you do a lot of public outreach. I don't know if there will be a lot of public input, but you never know until you go ask them. So I think it would be appropriate to do that and get some ideas, because I think there are probably a lot of amendments, some of which are not controversial, they're just more housekeeping amendments. But we may not be aware of all of them. And there may be members of the public who follow this stuff and have recognized some problems with the charter. So that would be my recommendation. But certainly, it's how you want to approach it would be up to the council. And I think it's a process. I guess, and Linda Smith will mention some deadlines. If the council wanted to proceed at the general election in 2025, we have some deadlines this summer, by the middle of the summer, that we would have to comply with. So we would really need to get going on getting whatever committee or process organized, and then coming up with the draft ordinance and the draft amendments fairly quickly. It could be done, I think, but I'm not sure you would gather as much public input as you might if you allowed a few more months of public input and public outreach. So with that, I guess I'll, unless you have questions of me, I will turn it over to Linda to present her information.
Good evening, City Council. I did prepare this written so that I wouldn't leave anything out. So I'm just going to go ahead and read this. It was just real important that I got everything in that I thought that you might want to know. So I'm going to go ahead and read this information that I have spoke with Patrick about. As council considers the timing of an election to obtain voter approval of changes to the charter, it is good to keep in mind the cost of an election, both financially and in staff resources. If the city was to add questions to the county statewide general election ballot in November 2025, the cost estimate, and this is based on 2024 election costs from the county clerk, would be approximately $13,000 to $15,000 for about five questions. If a taber notice is required, which for the charter, that probably wouldn't be, but I just wanted to make sure you knew of that, the cost would be an additional at least $10,000. The next city municipal election is scheduled for April 7th, 2026, as Patrick said, and costs for the election will range from $15,000 to $18,000. And that was based on our 2024 election. And that was with the county clerk's participation with that. The city municipal election will have council candidates listed and can include any questions that the council would like to have placed on the ballot. The Montezuma County Clerk's Office has conducted municipal elections for the city in the past. However, they are not required to do so. The cost would be more if the county does not conduct the election due to the equipment and staff that they dedicate to support city staff for the election. Special elections can be held with specific dates allowed due to the closeness to the city's municipal election. Costs for a special election based on the county helping with the election would be the same amount as estimated for the city's municipal election expenses as it would be a standalone election just for the city. To be included on the county statewide general election ballot in November 2025, the city would be required to send notice to the Montezuma County Clerk by Monday, July 1st, 2025, stating the intent of the city to participate in the 2025 November coordinated election. The last day to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the county for inclusion on the ballot would be August 26th, and the last day to certify the ballot, that would mean everything would have to be done on our end, would be September 5th. The county clerk would prefer that the city not wait to the last day to sign the agreement or certify the ballot content, as approval for both require council and the Montezuma County Clerk's approval. If the charter questions were to be placed on the city's municipal election scheduled for April 7th, 2026, the questions would need to be approved on first and second reading through an ordinance by the end of January 2026. The ballots for the election are printed the first part of February, so they can be mailed to the Yucca voters by the middle of February. Hopefully, this information helps council understand the projected costs and timeline for future elections. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Linda, thank you for this information. I did not get the second part. We first started off speaking to if we were to participate in the November 25th election, it would run about $13,000 to $15,000. And then there was an additional charge for...
A taber notice. And that wouldn't really apply. I just wanted to make sure you knew of that. I mean, it doesn't, we don't have any financial questions?
Yeah, I guess certainly if one of the charter amendments would be to impose a new tax, perhaps a lodging tax or some other type of financial obligation, that comes under taber. And you have to publish a notice, a taber notice before the election. And there's a process that you go through for drafting it and getting pro and con statements and that sort of thing. But I haven't heard council say that they're looking at requesting any taxes in this charter amendment, but certainly that's a possibility that you might consider. And just keep in mind that it would have taber implications.
One of the things that occurred to me was that it seems like in order for the public to have input effectively, we would have to do a lot of legwork upfront. So identify the things that needed to be included. This is not the type of thing that, you know, we want to have to do every few years. Let's make it really sweeping and powerful and meaningful. So how would that work? I know that you're, you've sort of gone through and identified things as we've met. Would city council do the same? Would you have department heads?
Sure. I think it would be appropriate internally to create a list of possible amendments that staff and council can come up with without any public input, or if you've already received public input. That way, we can go out to the public, because most members of the public are not reading our charter line by line and highlighting where they think there should be changes. Now, once we provide a list of possible changes, I suspect there will be some members of the public who will want to go through each of our suggested changes. And that may trigger in their own mind, changes that they think would be appropriate. So, but I think rather than just starting with a blank slate, it would be a good idea for staff and perhaps council to at least have one work session and have staff present some suggested changes before the public outreach process starts. And that certainly doesn't preclude the public from suggesting items that staff or council didn't come up with. But it at least gives them a guideline to see if we're addressing things that they might agree with or disagree with.
So, I'm aware of three issues that have come before the council in the last few months that are possible amendments. Is there a separate charge for each amendment in the voting count or in the process of all this? Or is it...
After speaking to the county clerk, it's the room that we take up on the ballot that we're paying for if we go with the county clerk ballot in November. If it's on our own ballot in April, that's our ballot. I mean, you can take all the room you need on our ballot. We're paying for the ballot anyway. But when we go with the county clerk on their election, it is on the amount of the part that we take up, just like the school district paid for their part they took, we will have to pay for ours. And she based her price on five questions.
Are we aware of, how is staff feeling about this? How are you feeling about the timing? What's your input on this to us?
Well, if you're directing that towards me, I think it would be difficult to get the desired public input by the time we have to finalize the ballot and get it certified to the county clerk in order to hold it in November. I think that would be rushing it. It's not impossible. But I think because this is a pretty extensive process, and like I said, 2006 is the last one, I believe. So you can see, we don't do it every two or three years. So I would say, let's try to get it right and try to gather as much information from the public, as well as allow staff and council to kind of pour through all of this stuff and find out what changes really should be made. And so my recommendation would be the April 7th, 2026 city election. Mr. Sanders may have a different opinion.
No, excuse me, council. Yeah, I tend to agree with that. I think November's going to be a little too quick, and we're going to, you know, possibly make some errors, especially with public outreach that way. I also have some concerns if even next April is going to be too soon, depending on what we do. What I'm worried about is, we get in there and we may find a lot more things, depending on what the committee thinks, than just the few things off the top of my head. So I think we'd need to, you know, look at our scope on that and to be, you know, we don't want to go through this several times, but we don't want to come in with a giant laundry list of changes either and trying to hit that sweet spot. But again, April 2026, that's with us getting on it quickly.
I think, to me, I think that makes sense. I think probably make a go or no-go decision sometime in the fall, whether we think we can make that January deadline for the April election, or if we, or if we need to just not regroup, but continue on the process and then decide to either do a special election after that one, or get on to the next fall election. So, yeah, I think that the timeline sounds reasonable to me.
So in order to... So, so in order to meet the guidelines for the April 7th election, we would have to have all of our revisions and, and the ballot questions drafted and the ordinance passed in Jan, the end of, by the end of January of 2026. Now, if, if, if we get to that point and we're still deep into the public input and we don't think we're ready, you can hold a special election anytime between April and presumably the county's general election in 2026 as well. But you, you incur the cost, which I believe was 15,000 to 18,000 or 13,000 to 15,000. So, you know, it's not 100,000, but it is public money. And, and so we, we want to be conscious of that. This is a, obviously a major amendment to one of our primary governing documents. So I think we want to do it right. And if that would warrant spending that kind of money to do it, I would leave that up to the council to decide whether it's worth it or not. But it, it, it does get more expensive if you do it on a date other than April 7th.
I sometimes wonder too if there's more participation when we tag it on with a, a regular election cycle, rather than just a standalone.
Perhaps council would consider convening a, a committee on this. And let's start there, excuse me. Let's start there and then let's, let that process dictate when it actually goes to an election or not. I tend to agree, it would be even better to have it either with our regular council elections or the November elections, so we get more participation. Special election, I mean, we could do, but I wouldn't recommend. I mean, they're, they're so close in between and it's not pressing.
Okay, are there any other questions for Linda or Pat?
I just, I just had one question about convening that committee. If we were to do that, would we just do that at a near future meeting? We would have a, do it by resolution?
I don't know, well, in this case where we're amending a governing document, that might be a good idea to amend a resolution. Then, excuse me, we could also, as part of that resolution, assign council member X and a council member X1 to that. And formalize that, especially on something as serious as this.
Drew, do you recall the process specifically that we went through for the land use code committee? Did staff make recommendations on committee membership? Or how, how did we solicit participation?
So we, we assigned it internally. I mean, there's some natural people that were, should have been on there. Those people just ended up on it. And then council, we approached council and asked you who you wanted on there. And we can do that, but I, I look at land use code as far less serious. I mean, this is like rewriting the, you know, making a constitutional amendment almost at our level. So I look at it as I would like it to be a little more formalized.
I'm of the, I'm of the opinion that as many council members who want to participate in that committee should be participating in that committee and that it's limited. Is there an argument or a, a different side to that? I mean, it may be. Strong ideas and, and one just doesn't feel that strong. And I think that everyone who's up here who wants to part. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
If it's, if it's three or more, then you have to post notice and the public has the right to attend the meetings of, of the committee, which maybe you want, I'm not sure. But certainly you have the open meetings restrictions or requirements that you have to comply with if, if it's three or more council members.
I, I was just going to say, I think instead of having more than, more than two council members, I think you could have the two whoever is most interested and then anyone else who has, has specific input can, can transmit it either to staff or to those, to those two to make sure that those potential issues get, get addressed. Because I, I do think it would be, it would be beneficial to go over, to at least get the process started and then present. After the process has kind of gone a little bit down the line and we, we know sort of what we're looking at, then you present something publicly rather than, than the entire process being, being, being in the, in the.
I think you have a valid point there. My, my concern is this, is that oftentimes I keep running, I keep hearing we can't do it because of open meeting laws. We can't do it. And, or we shouldn't do it, or it's going to bog us down. And I think that's the point of the open meetings rule, is that they're involved. And we're apt. To begin with. And my understanding with the public and, you know, with the open meeting. Only if there's a good chance that there's going to be a policy decision made, meeting. Am I wrong in that?
Well, no.
Because I, I think the way I read it is that if there's a policy, that decision that's going to be made, it has to be open.
Yeah. If it's three or more, unless it's, there's no discussion of public business. It's like if, if you all three attend a Christmas party or something like that, you don't have to post that. But if, if you're going to discuss public business, even if you're not going to vote or make decisions, it, it has to be noticed 24 hours in advance and, and the public is, has a right to attend. Now, that, that would apply even as council member Dobree mentioned that perhaps you could have council members who aren't on the committee communicate with the other council members. Even if you communicate by telephone or email, that still comes under the auspices of a, of a public meeting that would have to be noticed. So I would certainly suggest if you are going to limit it to just two, but invite the other council members to provide input, that they do it to the staff rather than to the other council members. Because, you know, and, and, but, but you're, you're correct that the, at, at this committee level, there will be members of the public. So it's not a, it's not a necessarily a private meeting by any means. And, you know, with the land use code, we never really had members of the public wanting to attend the committee meetings other than those that were assigned to the committee. But certainly we would want to let people know that they have that right. And if somebody, you know, wants to show up at a committee meeting on a particular issue, they, they certainly can do that. Or they can start a coming to every meeting, even if they weren't appointed to the committee. So, but yeah, there's several ways you can construct the, the membership of the committee. So I, I think you, you may want to, I don't think, we're, we're not set up to vote on it tonight. So you may want to kind of ponder this option. And we don't want to spend too much time pondering because we, we do have time limits that we're going to be running up against.
All right, if we have no further questions, what do we have for general council discussion? All right, it seems like we have nothing for the general council discussion. And so we will reconvene at 7:30 for the regular meeting.